Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the workshop of the Saco City Council for February 10th, 2025. Let the record reflect, the workshop is beginning at 6:30. And I believe, bless you, and I believe that the item on the agenda is contract zones, and we have members of our staff with a presentation. Please take it away.
Thank you very much. We're happy to be here tonight to share an update with you. It'll be somewhat brief because there's still more work to be done, but we wanted to share what we had to date with you. And I'm thankful that Tracy and Dave here can join us from Economic Development and Code Enforcement, so you can hear from all three departments if you have specific questions for them. A little bit of recap of this project to date. A long while ago, I had asked for consideration of just adding a list of the contract zones into the city's zoning ordinance to flag them for existing and future property owners. And that's how this project kind of got kicked off. So we're just going to go through updates and summaries and then some next steps from there. It's our recommendation that tonight we don't focus or maybe ask questions specific about one individual project or contract zone, but really look at this holistically as an umbrella approach. That would be the best in this case. So here's a little recap of the project. Staff had asked for a consideration of a contract zoning list as well as some changes to how we do contract zones. This was about a year and a half ago or so. That was to Section 230-1701. As a result of that work, we had issued a Contract Zoning Future Amendments Workshop and SOP, and out of that, we got some questions from the public and from council. In general, we're recommending in the future that our ordinance be amended to mimic similar to what Scarborough is doing for future contract zones. Out of that work, we presented a contract zone draft list back in the fall of 2024 that we shared with the council through city administration, and we also posted that to our website in case there were questions or comments from the public. We, other than the questions that we received from the public that the council received, we haven't received, we haven't seen any other questions or comments as Planning Department. And then we began an initial staff analysis on that list. So as part of that staff analysis, we had asked for some consideration of outside council and some assistance with going through some of the reviews from a legal consideration. And so as we go forward, staff will now categorize these contract zones into several different buckets or categories. And in general, the buckets or categories will be those contract zones that are completed and compliant, that substantial construction hasn't been met, and requirements were either not fulfilled. So in those cases, maybe somebody didn't get the site plan approval in time per the terms of the contract zone, or a condition's not fulfilled. So someone didn't fulfill a condition of an approval for a contract zone. And the first top row there will have projects in these categories will be allowed to continue and be constructed to completion. There's a little more nuanced information here, but when substantial construction is met, people have vested rights to continue with an approval. Completed and compliant will just, the project is complete, and that's that. And then requirements not fulfilled and conditions not fulfilled, those will generally be considered void. Now, there's a little more detail here than, this is a pretty over-generalization, but this is generally what we'll be doing as staff, is putting the contract zones into these categories, and I'll be asking Dave and Tracy for some help, their teams as well on this. And what we will be doing is looking at this with the eye of those contracts that were 2021 and before will be mostly these categories. After the zoning ordinance was adopted and moving forward, those will be an active list. So I understand it'll be very helpful. What we're doing now for council that would be helpful is to put the contract zone list that we issued in fall 2024 as a draft list. And still, if you have any comments or questions, you can still send those in if there's still time. And put these, put the contract zones into categories for you, and then come back with a full list and a full analysis. But this is what we have so far. So like I said, the next step's our final analysis. We're going to be doing some outreach to the property owners who have contract zones with the analysis and the information that we have. And there will, of course, be a report back to council as well with more detail and more opportunities for questions. And Tracy, Dave, did I leave anything out that you want to?
Well, thank you very much. I'll remind everyone, this is a workshop, so we are not under Robert's rules, so any questions or comments, please. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, can you give council and the public a sense of the time course of this project moving forward? So you're taking the contract zones pre-2021 and putting them into these four buckets. When should we expect to hear back and that list to be completed?
I would assume that we could have that done within the next two months. I don't want to overpromise the timeline, but roughly within the next two months is what I would anticipate. Dave, Tracy, do you have anything differently? City Administration, is that appropriate?
That seems to be appropriate. Just so for the public understands, there is substantial work that still needs to be done. But once you put those in the buckets that we've been talking about, we'll be able to, be able to clear some of the questions that have surrounded some of the other contract zones. So this will, I think will be very helpful, since we have over 50 contract zones or thereabouts. And so hopefully, we can get those into the different categories. And so those that are prior to 2021 that might be questioned on some issues, we'll be able to kind of whittle it down so that we're not talking about all 50. I think that's important because I think setting it up this way, we can identify those areas that we need to drill down more on.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just thought it might be helpful for the public to also understand that as hard as you folks are working, we are benefiting from legal counsel and legal guidance as we maneuver through these various issues because there are legal questions that have been addressed, that, one being vested rights. But I think it's important for the public to know that, that as much as we trust your judgment, there are some technicalities here that we need to reach out and have some help with. Thanks.
And I appreciate that comment. So what we'll be looking to do is when we do our final wrap-up, have some memo in there or some documentation from the outside council as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's not really a question, though it's going to sound like it. So for the category required, requirements not met, will there be an opportunity for a business to actually fulfill those? Or will there be criteria to say this business perhaps has a window to meet those requirements if they have been lax in committing them?
May I address that question? Yep. So what we will do is we'll examine the contract and see the terms of the contract. It will really depend on what the terms required. If they're too far past the terms, there may be an opportunity for them to come back to the city council and ask for something. But there's probably not going to be a lot of grace period that we can provide necessarily.
Thank you. That's the answer I was looking for. Thanks.
Yeah, my suggestion on that is that if we do stumble across a situation like you've described and the time is over, that I wouldn't, would not hesitate to allow that same applicant to come back and start the process over again with us. And in doing so, they are likely to be subject to a little bit more stringent approach to granting a contract zone. I think, I think our process gives people ample amounts of time to complete the task. And if they don't, I think we just keep the door open for them to come back and start anew.
I think my hope is it would be a rare circumstance where somebody wouldn't know which bucket they fit into already. The contract should be pretty well laid out. The date's pretty clear. I don't anticipate that we'll find too many surprises. I think we'll, generally, one looking at the contract zones would agree which bucket it goes into, and they're likely already inactive if they're going to fall into that inactive list and already complete or substantially complete if they're going to fall into that side. So hopefully, what Counselor Edwards' point is well taken. Hopefully, that's a rare or nonexistent circumstance.
And as part of the final analysis, one more thing I should mention is Dave and I will be looking at what is conforming to today's zoning ordinance, the way that the zoning ordinance was rewritten. There were some, as we know, some areas in the city where uses were combined. So zones were combined, so uses in certain areas changed a little bit. So we'll be trying to comb through that as well and finish up that combing, I should say, because we've started that, but try to comb through that and see if the contract is really still necessary in certain situations.
Any other comments from council? Anything to add, Mr. City Administrator?
I think the timeframe will go by quick, and we'll have to, got a lot of work ahead of us to make sure that we place these in the appropriate categories.
Okay, then. Well, I thank you all for your presentation this evening. I know it's been a long time coming for a lot of folks, and hopefully, next time we see you, we will have a lot to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll just take a moment. Okay, and with that, I will call this meeting of the Saco City Council to order for February 10th, 2025. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. The mayor is absent this evening, so I, Counselor Gunn, in my capacity as deputy mayor, will be presiding. And with that, would you all join us with the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. This evening, we have, next item would be under general. We have nothing under general this evening. Next item up would be committee correspondence to council. Do we have any councilors at this time that have any committee correspondence they'd like to share with council? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As liaison to the Energy and Sustainability Committee, on behalf of them, I am proud to report the installation of a two-stall electric vehicle charging station at the Saco Community Center. These Level 2 chargers are the first city-operated public charging stations. While paid use will come down the line in the future, the charging station is currently available at no cost as a pilot program to determine optimized community use. The Energy Committee is receiving reports on the charging station's use, and staff will develop a policy and a fee schedule in the coming months. This collaborative, interdepartmental effort minimized costs to the taxpayers with Public Works completing excavation, electrical and paving work, facilities managing the project, and Energy Committee capital funds covering the equipment purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Any other member of the council with any correspondence? Seeing none, moving on to public comment. At this time, does any, if any member of the public wishes to make a comment, please step forward to the mic, and you have three minutes. And of course, reminder for the record, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone again. Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. A few thank yous. To the citizen review grievance ad hoc, council members Hatch, Gunn, and Johnston, thank you for meeting last month and last week's update. To those watching on video, they are meeting this Wednesday, February 12th, at 5:00 p.m. Citizens can now find their agendas posted on the city board's committees and commissions webpage under Advisory Body Meeting Materials. Counselors, will you be updating the minutes and supporting documents to that webpage as well? And where will the Wednesday's meeting be held this Wednesday? It was not on the agenda. Thank you again for advancing the grievances by the citizens. Absolutely, truly appreciate it. Thank you for tonight's Contract Zone workshop. I am disappointed that there was no supporting documents in a packet at the back table. I did come in early in order to be prepared for this workshop and to listen to any of your comments or questions. I have to go off live right now because I just heard the information. For full disclosure, it is my opinion and that of Legal that we have sought as citizens pre-2021 contract zones, even though you, this presentation was diplomatic, I understand why, but it's full disclosure. Those are illegal. They aren't there. And the contract zone people do need to know, out of those 50, there's only a handful that has happened since after 2021. On October 29th, Inger and I did meet with the planner and the city administrator. We did find out who the legal consult was on this. We stated why it shouldn't be. And I, and I was told that Legal was already hired, that this person was already on the job. That was October. Has there been any correspondence, any legal opinion that has been presented to the administrator and/or this council that should be public? Contract zones is public. The information that we're seeking is public. The grievance is public. These contract zones, which I have looked at the entire book of the 51, and some of them are unsigned, we need to have full disclosure of the information on video, on record. What I just heard, it was not even addressed, that these are illegal, and that's why you're putting them into these four boxes, which I do appreciate. But we need to fast-forward this. This has been years. I addressed it with that attorney in 2020. And here we are, almost four and a half years later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown, and I live at 161 Simpson Road. Two items, Contract Zone workshop. I feel that the way the item was on the agenda, it really was not very clear that a major opinion was going to be issued. And I would agree that I think the public should have any supporting documentation, any legal opinion to review. Contract zoning is part of the zoning ordinance, very substantial tool. And I think that, as Ms. Archer said, I would like to review those documents. I'm sure there are many people as well who would like to review them. Secondly, I also want to thank the ad hoc committee, the Grievance Ad hoc Committee. I sent an email today. I won't rehash the email. But just to be clear, I have enclosed the full packet from the public hearing on September 26, 2023. It's a large document. And we've also enclosed the minutes that the clerk issued, the formal minutes, from the public hearing portion of that very special meeting. I think one thing that I'm struggling with is the September 26, 2023 council meeting was a special council meeting with a noticed, in the Portland Press Herald, "public hearing." And that public hearing was a chance for all Saco citizens to speak. City Attorney Murphy, as well as Special Counsel Langsdorf, laid out to the council that any citizen, not just the grievance petitioners, could speak at that public hearing. And to me, the public hearing is part of the record. Unfortunately, the video portion of the public hearing was stopped during the public hearing. The council, some of you were there, the council meeting adjourned. The public hearing began. Pardon me, members of the public who presented sat at the tables. And there were some complaints that that public hearing, noticed in the paper by the city, is not available. And the feed was cut off after about 19 minutes. So my question to City Administrator Bahenko and to the IT department, does that video exist? Was it simply not broadcast, or was it actually not recorded? it simply not broadcast, or was it actually not recorded? The public hearing was professionally recorded by the grievance petitioners. We have a video copy of the full, full public hearing that I think the ad hoc committee members should have at their disposal, as well as the full council. But my question would be if the city has a copy of that full public hearing from September 26, 2023, and to make that available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing no member of the public wishing to be recognized, moving on to approval of the minutes. And there is one approval, letter A, for the minutes for the meeting of February 3rd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Parks? Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, this, as there is no action items this evening, it would be new business, letter A, public information session Interstate 195 and Ocean Park feasibility study, scheduled for February 24th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Saco Study Hall in the second floor auditorium. Do you have any information on that, City Administrator Bohanko?
Certainly, Deputy Mayor. As the city council is aware, there, we had a presentation previously relative to this matter, and it came to our attention that a lot of people in the area, in the, in the project area were not aware or was not informed as much as they should have been from the city relative to this project that's going to move forward. So we decided, as the council asked us to go forward in getting a presentation established, and that's going to be, as you said, February 24th, at 2025 at 6:00 p.m. It'll be at 6:00 p.m. before regular city council meeting. This, well, the city council will hold the public information session in addition to other items for that evening. So the study was done in collaboration with the Maine Department of Transportation, Old Orchard Beach, City of Saco, and others to review and consider safety improvements for the Interstate I-95 and Ocean Road corridor physically located in the communities that I just mentioned. At this session, the study consultants will provide presentation of results, and opportunities for public comment will be provided. A copy of the notice will be mailed out to property owners, similar to what we do with the butters for planning notices. Also, we will be advertising, and our communications department has already issued a press release on this. So it's, we're going to, if you know people that have an interest, or, or you might think they have an interest, please let them know. This will be an opportunity for them to come out and speak with, Maine DOT will be here, Gorlan Palmer, the consultant, will be here. So we have that, and there will be representatives from Old Orchard Beach. I talked to the town manager there the other day. Their chair will be here as well. So we, we really want to, you know, let people know this is going to happen on the 24th. So if they have a concern, this will be their opportunity. And also, as indicated, we'll be sending those out via email, similar to what we do with the butters list. Does anybody have any questions of me relative to this?
Any questions from the city council for the city administrator? I think we are good. Okay. Moving on, next item up would be the administrative update. Mr. City Administrator?
Well, as I just mentioned to you, the, one of the major items I put on my administrative update was the issue relative to this public information session. Also, just a reminder, tonight, we will be removing snow from the downtown. As you can see out there, the snowbanks are pretty high, so we will be getting that out of there before the next snowstorm comes in later in the week. So if there's any concerns, let me know. I always, you know, I've responded to a couple issues, nothing major, but I just wanted to let you know, if you hear of anything that might be of concern to your constituents, please let me know, and I'll follow up on it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bohanko, and any questions or comments for the city administrator? Seeing none, moving on to council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment from any member here? Seeing none, we're making good time tonight. It would be, next item up would be the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We had ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSI Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6A, Personnel Matters.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Edward, I'm sorry.
Berman.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yes.
And Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passed 7-0. Almost made it through. Motion to pass at 7-0 for executive session at 6:57, and that will be downstairs, and we will take a five-minute break in between.
Okay, everyone here, I will entertain a motion at this point to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Or, motion made by Councilor...
Edwards.
Edwards, thank you very much, roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Or, motion made by Councilor...
Edwards.
Edwards, thank you very much, roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 7-0. Is there a report from executive session?
No report.
Thank you, with that, I will entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Hewitt, please, thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.